Good evening, this is the Ashland School Committee meeting for Wednesday, June 13th, 2018. We start by reading our vision statement, which is, "The Ashland Public Schools will be a model district that embraces the academic and social-emotional growth of all students through a supportive, collaborative, and challenging experience. Our students will develop into lifelong learners who will contribute positively to society." Our agenda for the evening is our call to order, which we've just done, opening procedures and agenda review and adoption, followed by recognitions and student presentations, which will have recognition of 2018 retirees and Student Advisory Council. In our areas of public comment, and I'm going to ask the committee to remind me to do public comments, because I always forget, items of interest to the public are the Ashland Innovation Center, recognition subcommittee update and presentation, MINDAS school improvement plan, bilingual parent advisory council proposal, AHS student activities account, model United Nations Treasury, MAT, the middle school student activities sub-account, Timepiece Newspaper, approval of district-wide co-curricular advisor position, instructional grant coordinator and approval of stipend for instructional grant coordinator, a student travel request for the AHS Make-A-Wish Club to Florida in November 2018. We'll have then administrative items, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, warrant approvals from Ms. Bates, we have no policy updates tonight, and our consent actions, and we'll have the approval of minutes for May 23rd, acceptance of any gifts, committee reports and activities, member updates, and action items. Members of the school committee, is that agenda acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So with that, our first item on the agenda is recognitions and student presentations, recognition of the 2018 retirees. Mr. Adams?
Great, thank you, Mr. Terry. Pat Crowd tonight, if you can't see us here. It's always a special night to recognize our retirees from the Ashland Public Schools and to celebrate all that they've given us and all of the time and effort spent with our children, most importantly, in molding and shaping the students of the future. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce our first retiree this evening, and then the principals will introduce the retirees from their respective buildings. But I said this probably, I don't know, a couple months ago, I think when Pat was here doing a presentation, that we're very fortunate to have Ms. Pat White as our preschool director for the past 25 years, all that she's brung, brought to the school system and the conversations that she and I have had, and capped off with another one this morning, that I'm so thankful that the preschool back in 1993 with Dr. Ruth Field, working through developing the preschool and growing it to a place where our children, it's probably Mr. Vera's and I favorite spot to go to in the district, because everyone's smiling and they're happy, and then you walk into the WeWatch room for our littlest of clockers within the community and their students of our, of our teaching staff, their children of our teaching staff. So on behalf of myself, our administrative team, for being a part of our team, my nine years here have been fruitful because of you, I really appreciate the time and effort you've spent with me, and would like to present you a plate that says, "To Patricia White, 25 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018." I do not see Ms. McKee here, so we will skip over to the David MINDAS school. Mr. Kira?
Hi, we have two individuals who are retiring, who have served the MINDAS elementary school. First, we want to talk about Ms. Wendy Schneider, who has not only served the MINDAS school, but she's also served as a COTA or a Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant across the district for the last 18 years. And Wendy is an amazing advocate for all the students on her caseload, she services many of our youngest learners on a regular basis, and that's how I have witnessed Wendy, but I do know that she helps out students at the high school and the middle school as well, constantly servicing them in terms of making sure they're getting exactly what they need, when they need it, all the time, whether it be during a pull-out session or during an inclusion setting in their classroom, as well as during meetings. Wendy adds such tremendous value and provides parents with such great advice with how they can help their children at home. So for 18 years, she's done this, and she's served the students of Ashland quite well. We wish you well in your retirement, Wendy, I know there'll be lots of plans, and I'm sure running will be part of that, so enjoy it.
Thank you.
And the school committee has another plate for you as well, which reads, Wendy Schneider, 15 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018.
And the reason Mike said 18 was for my first three years, I worked between native and here.
Congratulations, congratulations. So our next retiree has pretty much become synonymous with the MINDAS school. For 17 years, of her 27 years within the Ashland Public School District, Janet Crawford has worked as a physical education teacher at MINDAS. I think anybody who goes through the MINDAS elementary school leaves with a couple major memories, and every one of those major memories is directly related to an event that is run and was probably even started by Mrs. Crawford. Our physical education teachers work together, and I know that she's certainly going to miss her work husband, Dan Powers tremendously. I think he'll probably, I think he'll probably miss her a little bit more than she misses him, but it's going to be a huge loss for our students and our staff. I'm quite certain that Mrs. Crawford is a staff favorite, and folks will be missing her dearly, especially when it comes time for the events that she's run, such as the Mud Run, the Spooky Run, she brought us the MINDAS Marathon, which is a favorite of everyone, Aces Day, the Hoedown, the Turkey Trot, our Walk to School Days, intramurals, and the Jump-a-thon. So her impact on the lives of students is immeasurable, and we certainly wish you the best in your retirement, Mrs. Crawford.
Janet Crawford, 27 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018.
And Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
I'll have you stay there for a moment, only because, you know, quite often during the beginning of the year, we have recognitions of staff as well for amount of service that they've, they've put into the Ashland Public Schools in teaching, et cetera, and Janet reminded us that, hey, I didn't get my award at the beginning of the year, and she's right, she didn't, and she's much deserving of, of the clock that we give out for over 25 years of service, so Janet and I have it here today.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, tonight I'm here to speak about Ms. Maureen Wellzell, who is retiring after 32 years, most of which have been at Ashland Middle School, although when we talked earlier, she had served additional time as a para and various other responsibilities, so she has about 40 years in education, so she started when she was about seven or eight years old, I think, is about right. Maureen, at the, at the middle school in sixth grade, there's not, there couldn't have been a better place for her. Coming, when I came in six years ago and met Maureen and was in her classroom, she truly understands the developmental, developmental level of those sixth grade students, she makes connections with those students, she knows what those students need on a daily basis. If there's a student who needs support, who needs help beyond the class setting, beyond the content, beyond organization, if there was a family who needed support, a student was struggling for some reason, Maureen would be the first one knocking on my door saying, here's what's happening and here's what this student needs, which I think I appreciated most about her. There wasn't a student who didn't need that support, where she wouldn't be trying to make that connection, and she's been doing it a long time. I know, I appreciated that, I know her colleagues so respect her, her opinion, her background, her knowledge, and she is going to be sorely missed by her colleagues, but certainly most of all, the students and the families that have been fortunate enough to have her over the past 32-plus years at the middle school. So we're going to miss her, we wish her the best of luck, I know Maine is in, is in her future to spend quite a bit of time, I know she's looking forward to it, and she's certainly, certainly well deserved, so we certainly wish Maureen Wellzell all of the best and congratulations on her retirement. Congrats, Maureen.
Ashland High School has three retirees this year. Michelle Rocio has been a valued ESP for the Special Education Department for the past 14 years. She started as a one-on-one student, one-on-one assistant to a student on the autism spectrum, and we were lucky enough to be able to keep her when that student graduated. In her time at AHS, she has assisted in every level of classes, from CP1 all the way up to AP. Michelle is a calm, caring person who helps students succeed by guiding them through the learning process. Teachers and students alike fought to be able to work with Michelle, she will definitely be missed.
Michelle Rocio, 14 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018.
Our second retiree is DJ Jost, who has taught at Ashland High School for the past 16 years, but actually started her teaching career in Ashland Public Schools in 1980 when she worked for one year as a music teacher before the program was cut. DJ has taught students at every level from CP1 to honors. Mike Shannon, her department liaison, describes her as always willing to take on any teaching assignment and do what is needed to meet the needs of the students. DJ is known for enthusiasm and her energy in the classroom, she's often found bouncing around. Besides teaching, she was actively involved in so many aspects of Ashland High School, from playing in the pit band at musicals to emceeing the bingo night for student council to getting the student ambassadors program up and running to make sure that new students always felt welcome, just to name a few of her passions. Her passion and smile will definitely be missed at Ashland High School.
Donna Jean Jost, 17 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018.
And last but not least is Martha Thompson, who has been a special education teacher at Ashland High School for the past 26 years, and a witness to many of the changes in the field of special education. She's been an integral part of both the special education and math departments, and served as the special education department head for many years. Martha took on helping students in the area of math as her area specialty and co-taught many math classes over the years. She helped to design curriculum and meet the needs of all of our different learners. She's been a role model for the department for many years, and her strong presence will definitely be missed.
Martha Thompson, 26 years devoted service to the Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018.
For the last two years, I've had the great opportunity to be able to work and learn with Linda on a daily basis. Linda's work has been outstanding. I was commenting to a few individuals downstairs earlier tonight of, I hope that I have the drive that she has at that point in my career. Linda, over these two years, has volunteered to be on each and every volunteer committee in our school to make sure she's supporting our students and our families of saying, how do we improve our school? She's that dedicated individual that not just cares about our classroom and making sure that she's reaching those students, but all the students in our school, and she has an invested interest with her grandchildren in our school as well. Linda's been an outstanding colleague to her, to her partners in the grade level, to our school, and I will miss having the opportunity to work with her each and every day.
So we'll just read briefly, Linda McKee, 18 years devoted service to Ashland Public Schools, June 21st, 2018. Do you want to take that on her back?
And before I bid you adieu for the evening, would all of the recipients tonight please stand up and we can get a picture right here in front of facing out that way? Please, and thank you, I know there are other people who want pictures, so.
Bring your plates.
Bring your plates, though, yes, hold your plates. And should you want the boxes the plates are in, they're outside with your name on them, so you're welcome to grab. You are all free to go, please. You don't want to be here for the next couple hours with us.
Thank you, folks.
Yeah, right. Thank you again. Yes, DJ, yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Student Advisory Council. Would our council like to come and provide their update? Good evening.
Sorry, hi.
Hi.
Thanks for having us again.
Thank you for coming.
So we have our new council here, some of the, well, you know us too, we're back, and then we have some new people.
For the community, we want you to introduce yourselves as you speak to.
Right, I'm Nicole Abettini, so some things that have been going on, the National Honor Society just donated $7,200 to Community Giving Tree, presented the check, and it was a great thing, they were very appreciative.
Thank you.
Hi again, I'm Olivia Beaton, and I'm a rising senior, and my update is that NHS will be holding a meeting Monday after finals for any freshmen, sophomores, or juniors who are planning to apply next year or the year after that, to inform them about what is NHS and what our charity is, because we really want to bring a bigger presence to our school this year, because I know when I was a freshman and sophomore, I didn't really know what NHS was, so we're really trying to amp up NHS in our school, so we really want to get that information out there, so yeah, they'll be happy Monday.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hallie Silver, I'm a rising junior, and my update is that we just held class elections for all new class officers, we clearly had the school committee elections, we also, Senator Spilka's Advisory Council also been elected for those, that was run by student council, they did a really great job, and we have all new officers, so.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Ellis, and I'm going to be a sophomore next year. Make-A-Wish just got their goal of granting a third wish by raising a total of $8,000, and we just had Class Day, which was before graduation, which was a great event, and all the students got to say bye to their senior friends as they walked out and then went to go walk around all the Ashland schools, so yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Namine Aldum, I'm going to be a sophomore next year, and we're just about to start finals on Friday, and getting ready for all the summer work from all the different classes that we have to do.
I scoffed at that, but I shouldn't, because I have college to worry about, so. So the seniors enjoyed a beautiful senior week, we went to Canobie, Kimball Farm, in the spirit of Boston cruise, and we had absolutely fantastic weather for all three days, which was great. For Class Day, we had a wonderful speech by Jess Benedictus, our class president, and thanked Ms. Tumi and Ms. Graham for both stepping up and being our class advisors, and I actually got to show the slideshow that I've been working on for four years, which was really nice. And then for graduation, we heard speeches from the Salutatorian Niraj and Valid Victorian Sabrina, and it was a beautiful ceremony. I'm thankful for going through this wonderful school system, and I wouldn't have wanted to go through any other one, and thank you all for organizing it.
So Julia, stay there, we would like to thank you for your contributions to the discussions here and being the student council representative. I think of my experience over the three years, you have contributed as much as any in terms of your thoughtfulness and your concerns and considerations of the subjects we're talking about, from day one, you've shown a willingness to contribute to the dialogue, and for us, that's really important, because we haven't been students in a long time, and to really appreciate and understand the student perspective that you've offered has been fantastic, so thank you very much for your contributions over this year, and we have a little something for you.
Thank you, Julia.
You can, it's just a stand, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow, this is a test. I can hold me over my head.
You're not much.
Here, I'll just. The suspense. Oh, oh, this is so sweet. I'm going to keep this in my college dorm, just look at it for a while.
This is what this rose, the big square. It's just a stand.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Julia. And you're free to leave, you've graduated, you can just grab your stuff and see it. Yeah, so Nicole, so, so who is our next representative? I know, I do, Nicole Abettini will be joining us, and since you all have finals, you're welcome to go home tonight, too, and, and we will, unless you want to stay?
I actually can stay, I was looking forward to this.
Okay, awesome, so join us.
We have an extra chair, right?
Awesome.
We have an extra chair.
There's no need, yeah, once you graduate, your responsibilities were done. We were just waiting for the election, we just wanted you here to, to receive the recognition.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, have a great summer.
And you can leave that for Julie, or for Nicole, the agenda?
Oh, yeah.
And then? Get her name plate.
Now, we'll get a name plate, take your name plate, Julia?
Oh, I can take it?
Yeah, no one else has named Julia Sicard.
We went all out on that one.
Thank you, Julia. Thank you so much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good luck at school.
Good luck at UVM, oh, I mean, UMass, sorry.
You just can't take the Vermont out of the boy, can you? So, welcome aboard. Congratulations on your election.
Actually, I'm looking forward to this, it's my third year on the advisory council, so figured it was my turn.
Yeah, awesome, great.
Well, we certainly welcome you to contribute freely to the dialogue, your opinions are important to us. So on the next item on the agenda is public comment, I didn't forget it this time, is there any member of the public who is here to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move to the items of interest to the public, number two is the Ashland Innovation Center, AHS Maker Space, Chad McGowan. Mr. McGowan?
Thanks for staying.
They're not allowed to leave.
All right, let's see if I can get this up and running. Hi, thanks for having me in again.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate the invite and opportunity to share a little bit, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. You are looking at our brand-new logo that the students, you know, they had stuff up on the wall for much of the year, and they finally decided on and created this digital version of our logo, so I'm really happy to have that, you'll probably see it on a lot of things over the next year. The year has been a busy one, for sure. We started the year, pretty much last year, by, when we got the grant awarded by the AFI, and that afforded us the opportunity to really think big about what we wanted to do, and we're putting into place a five-year plan, this being year one of that plan, actually kind of, we had a, you know, an alpha year, if you will, before that, so one of the things that happened early to us in this year was a article was placed in the US News and World Report that highlighted the work that we were doing already, and kind of the vision that we had set forth, so I thought that was a really neat way to start our year, and we really appreciate the effort that was put in to have that article published. Visi Talik did that right up. So what we've been doing this year is a combination of in-school and after-school programs that students have been participating in. The after-school program targets middle school on Mondays, MINDAS school on Tuesdays, and high school on Wednesdays. By creating these opportunities for students to come in, we've also created a group of students who call themselves, or we call them now, the, the Makerspace Mentors, who help lead all these after-school activities, um, and have built their own leadership, they really feel an ownership over the Ashland Innovation Center in a way that has greatly benefited us in terms of just having everything, um, having a student voice that we can bounce ideas off of, but also more often receive ideas from. So here we're seeing some photos of some students that were involved in the after-school program, we had 3D printing, we had 3D designs, so you can see the giant, for those of you not familiar, on the far left there is something out of the, um, why can't I think of it?
Minecraft?
Yes, Minecraft, thank you, the Minecraft world, and, um, you know, so not everything we do has to be digital, and we encourage the kids, you know, the making is going to incorporate technology, and some of the creative ideas are going to have very little to do with technology, and the students are just working in all kinds of mediums within the space. Uh, here are some more students at work, the, um, we had a couple of programs this year where we actually offered the program with a premium, allowing students to actually purchase, um, hardware in terms of technology that they could then go home and continue learning on, so instead of just coming into the space and being like, oh, that's neat, and then leaving after five weeks and not having access again, we provided those opportunities, we got the materials, um, at good prices that we could then allow them, uh, to not only participate, but take materials home. So you see some of these, they're using a tool called the Makey Makey, we also have some 3D printing going on, uh, in these shots. And here is, uh, back in the fall, our Makerspace Mentors were able to present at MasQ, which is the largest technology, uh, you know, it's computer-using educators is the Q part, and it's the largest of its kind in Massachusetts, uh, probably in all of New England. And they were one of the student presentation groups, as you can see, uh, Mr. Adams was there, as well as several administration, uh, Ms. Henry and myself. And we also have help from other adults, uh, Ms. Marshquist at the high school and Jeannie Young from Community Ed. The four of us really kind of play different roles, but help keep this program rolling from the adult side, and these are just four of our kids, we can only take four, but there's about ten kids who help mentor in the after-school session. And they've elected leadership for next year and they're, they're really well organized. So, in school, we have, um, or in the high school, we have a number of ways that students are getting involved. The, um, students are involved through courses, so we run the Student Technology Help Desk course that we've run for a few years. We gave those students an opportunity to work in that space this year, and we saw them doing such projects as the pinball machine and, um, a student who created an electric guitar. We also invited courses to come in and use the space, that's a really difficult, challenging thing to figure out how to fit those in when other classes are going on. Um, so we experimented with that a couple of times, a game design class came in, you can see the, uh, dice there that students actually designed and printed their own dice onto blank dice, um, coming up with their own concepts for what they wanted things to represent. And then we had, most recently, Ms. Toomey brought her, uh, American History course in, and they did this amazing array of projects. They were building artifacts for a museum to represent different decades in American history, and, uh, the results are currently on display in the high school and will continue to be on display through, um, at least the next week or so. Um, in the top right is another student project, so he just came in and said, I wanna make this as a gift, and it was a box that they created a swivel top to and used various machines to, to get that done. And some more student projects, the guitar, that fan you see in the middle, um, everything but the motor, um, all 3D printed. They designed and printed the entire thing. Um, and then the rock and roll, that's the, uh, good old jukebox there on the left, that was built in the, uh, Makerspace just last week. And some of the tools that we've been able to get, we have an awesome tool shed full of, uh, small power tools and hand tools of all sorts, purchasing some woodworking equipment, like the drill press and the scroll saw, we also have a fabrication center which allows students to do 3D printing, uh, on the right bottom is the Carvy, which carves into wood, uh, or other types of materials. And the most recent addition on the left-hand side, the Glowforge, is our laser cutter, which is a phenomenal machine that you take almost any design and it can put it out onto acrylic, onto wood, it can cut out shapes, um. So with all of that in place, that's the end of my slides, but with all that in place, we're now gearing up for Year Two in which we're introducing a couple of new classes, we have a new art course called Create, where students will be working in the Makerspace, um, learning how to use the Makerspace to develop original artwork. So instead of just creating art that's on a computer screen or on a poster board, they're gonna be developing artwork that can be outputted into many of these fabrication machines. We also have a new course called Make, that is a mixture of students learning how to use the Makerspace and incorporating it into lessons, and they're gonna actually be learning how to educate. So this was inspired by our after-school mentors, and we wanted to create a course that really gave students a foundation for how do I go about teaching lessons and, and thinking about setting objectives and, um, so Ms. Henry at the high school and myself have been working on developing that course and will be running that next year. Uh, in addition, we expect to see some other classes continue to use the space and, uh, really continue to refine or expand different ways that the space can be used. I think I've said enough.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. McGowan? Doing awesome stuff, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's really great, of course, I think this might be the parent in me, what, what are the safety measures?
When you said laser, I just thought.
Yep, so. Yeah, this is all, this is all great, uh, questions, we are, um, so each machine has its own safety parameters in terms of what it comes with, but also what do we need to do in the space to ensure that we're, we're being safe? And some of the things, like the laser cutter, which, you know, it is a high-power laser, but it's designed in such a way that the complete case is self-contained, it shuts down if anybody tries to acca-, like, open the, the machine up. It has exhaust vents that goes out the window, the woodworking materials, uh, we're installing shut-offs that we can shut off from across the room, uh, through a remote control, we also keep everything locked up, so the devices, I shouldn't say everything, but our power equipment, like the woodworking tools, we actually keep those locked, so students actually have to request the material, uh, the machines be plugged in. A lot of the other ma-, equipment, th- there's very low risk, um, you know, teaching students how to use things appropriately is the biggest, uh, area of need, so that, you know, when they go in, you have a cabinet full of tools. Each one poses its own risk, but if we're teaching the students properly, they're gonna learn how to use these, you know. I think the best thing I can compare it to is like, when we teach kids how to use a glue gun in third grade, you're certainly not gonna put them in a room full of glue guns and say, go at it, without having some kind of safety instruction first and teaching them, and inevitably, somebody will burn themselves on the glue gun and they'll teach the rest, it really is hot, you know? So, we have a method of reporting things to the nurse if there are any kind of issues. So far, the only major issue in there has been myself, I cut myself last summer and setting up the space, since then, knock on wood, we've had minor nicks, but nothing major.
So, I, I wonder if you could just speak to sort of the mission of the AIC and, and sort of, you talked about a five-year plan?
Yeah.
Maybe just a, a little bit of a preview of what you see in the next three, four years, where you wanna go?
Um, our mission is to create a space in which students feel safe to explore their creative side while recognizing that they can make the world they live in, and we've brought in, instead of a classroom full of one type of machine, which, from a teaching standpoint, makes things really easy. You know, if everybody's sewing, I know exactly what everybody has, but instead, we've gone from, what do the students need in order to really expand their knowledge base and challenge themselves to think about, wow, I have a 3D printer here at my disposal, what can I do? And then it's up to the teachers to come up with curriculum that pushes kids into thinking about those different things. So over the next three to four years, we're very much in the refining process, now that we have a couple of courses designed specifically for the space. Getting students into those classes, uh, employing the curriculum that we're developing, and refining that will be part of the process. We'll also undoubtedly have things that we go, oh, that was not a good use of the space, let's reconsider this. We've, uh, talked about having, uh, activities where we can get the community involved, so we wanna be able to open the space occasionally for maybe a workshop. That's something that we see happening in the next couple of years, where we can say, instead of just, you know, Mendez Middle and High School, let's open this up to the town and say, we're gonna do a 3D printing workshop for anybody in the community that wants to sign up and be able to run something where this was intended to be a much, uh, bigger, uh, impact than just the students. And while our focus is the students, I think, once the community sees that value for themselves, uh, it would also help out. We've tossed around a lot of ideas internally, we had students coming in during study halls, like, they might go to the library, instead of going to the library, they would come to us, uh, we could only offer that on a limited basis, as I said, we had a couple of classes come in out of their class time. We're talking down the road about how to design courses that might be a history class that incorporates a unit that's really gonna focus on, we're gonna design, you know, instead of cramming one week of museum building into the end of the year, how do we design an entire unit around this concept? Those are gonna take, you know, it's, it's a longer plan in terms of finding the places where to fit those into our schedule and finding the teachers who wanna take those steps, and we definitely have teachers who are like, what can I do, I wanna get involved in this.
Anybody else? So I guess my only other question for you is just, um, going forward, I assume we're gonna have to replenish supplies over time and, and, um, you know, wanna make sure that the, the center has the resources it needs to continue to be able to do things, having that equipment without having the other material to, to be used there.
Right.
If that doesn't work, do you have a sense of what we're looking at to keep it, um, supplied at either the level it is now or wherever you want it to be?
I think, uh, we've been talking about that, and I see this coming year as a way for us to really, once we have a full load of classes in there, to really get a measure of what is gonna be the supply and demand, uh, of those consumables, and also, you know, are we seeing wear and tear on our machines that we're gonna have to replace them? We do have some, you know, we charge a fee for our after-school activities, that covers the expense of the materials those students use, we keep it a very low fee, but it also allows us to build up a little bit of a backend so that we can replace machines if necessary, um, or repair machines, depending on what the machinery is, some things are much easier to replace and some, uh, are much more affordable to repair, and those are definitely things on our mind. I don't have a good sense, you know, we've spent so much money getting to where we are right now, the annual cost, we're not really sure what that's gonna look like. So for this school year, we're set because we have, we're coming out of the grant, we have the funds from that grant where that would allowed us to build up a stock to get us going into the second year, um, and I think some of our own budgetary, since the courses are shifting, we're able to shift some of the budgetary needs to meet those, uh, but we don't know, like, with this new art course, I have no idea what that's, you know, really going to entail in terms of supplies or the make course, and we try to keep costs down by enhancing everything at the beginning and then creating a situation where the consumables are not the most expensive part, and, uh, you know, we're not, we're not creating a course where students are building new computers every year, that would be an awesome course, it's just financially not a viable thing. Instead, we bring in what are called microcomputers, students learn how to build around a microcomputer using chips and components that are much more affordable, and they might have something at the end of the year that really represents what they've done, and in most cases, we actually recycle those materials. Student can take it home for a while, show off what they've done, bring it back, uh, we have those opportunities.
Thank you. Oh, I'm good, thank you. So, why don't I ask you to just stay put, um, for a second, Paul, um, do you wanna talk about the recognition subcommittee update and presentation?
Yeah, I'll probably do it from up there.
Okay.
So, uh, for those that may not be familiar, uh, with what the subcommittee is, uh, the subcommittee was formed, uh, to investigate how we as a school committee uh, could recognize those individuals, both within and possibly outside the district, uh, for things that embody our vision and values uh, and have a broad or significant impact on, not only our district, but maybe the community as well. Uh, we last met, uh, on May thirtieth, we agreed upon a strategy that we'll bring forth to our retreat in the summer. Uh, however, Mr. Adams felt strongly that we had somebody that warranted, uh, recognition this year. So, given that we only had one more, uh, school committee meeting, uh, before school's out, uh, the subcommittee decided on the first recognition. So, um, I had written this before the, uh, the presentation, but, um, so, back in the fall of two thousand sixteen, Mr. McGowan approached the administration uh, with an innovative idea, um, to create a space that would provide, uh, students with the resource to explore new and valuable learning experiences, as you just heard. With his leadership and research and hard work, uh, he was able to develop a plan and secure the funding to create what we now know as the Ashland Innovation Center. The IC has, uh, already created opportunities for the high school students to host after-school programs that he spoke of, uh, for the middle school and Mendez students, uh, and as he said, they look to integrate, uh, more into the curriculum for high schoolers next year. As well as the possibility for the community programming, so, uh, without any further ado, uh, it is with great pleasure that, uh, we present, uh, to you, uh, quite literally a token of our appreciation for your leadership and hard work in, in the Ashland Innovation Center.
Paul, Paul, could you just talk about what that token is?
Uh, so, so the token, uh, the, the subcommittee, when we started, um, we, we reached out to all the administrators and Jim's, uh, sits in on it, and what it did is it kinda spurred a lot of people talking about recognition, including, uh, Mr. Adams, who also developed his own, uh, recognition strategy. And so, what this is, is, uh, and it was, uh, Mr. Adams' idea that we created, um, it's a two-sided token that on one side has, um, the town logo, uh, and on the other side, a, a school committee logo that, uh, was created by Mrs. Bates. And so what, what happens is, uh, Mr. Adams has his own, uh, recognition that he does that, where it fits within the confines of the schools and, and our peer recognition and things like that, um, but, uh, so we wanted to have something like this, as opposed to, hey, here's a piece of paper that's gonna be shoved in a drawer somewhere. And what was, what's pretty cool is, you know, I, I, I actually joked with Jim before, I said, if we, if we were a little bit ahead of the game, we probably could've, behind your back, had some of the kids to use the laser cutter and, and, and make a holder for you. But maybe that's still possible, uh, maybe that's a cool, uh, cool thing to try out with a laser cutter. But yeah, so the, it's, it's basically, uh, similar to a challenge coin or something like that you'd, 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 you know, have in the military, but something that, a little unique that we can, we can give to, uh, to people that deserve it, then, so, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. McGowan. Thank you again, Mr. McGowan, appreciate you coming in and thank you for all your work.
Appreciate it.
Next item, Mendez School Improvement Plan. Next item, Mendez School Improvement Plan, Mr. Kyra.
Start that timer, start that timer, we'll be nice and quick tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our, our school improvement plan for the 2018-2019 school year. Our folks, as always, worked very hard on this plan and we're proud to present it tonight. We, we are going to have three goals for next year. One of the goals is very similar to, two of the goals that we had last year in terms of improving our math scores and our ELA scores. As you know, last year, we really focused on our math open response questions. And we will see if, if those fruits of our labor have paid off. But we do know that we made great strides in terms of some consistency in how we're teaching open response questions, at least at Mendez. So this year, we, we want to really focus on our science, particularly at the fifth grade level, as that's where we take our MCAST and we'll be able to look at that data to see how we're improving. So the goal reads, based on data provided by the spring 2018 MCAST results, all grade five students will show an average increase of two points on the 2019 Science, Technology and Engineering MCAST specifically in the area of open response questions. We continue to specify that area. As we know, that is not only an area of weakness for us at Mendez, but really a statewide weakness. And we are using a specific teaching methodology now called the C E R, where our students are making a claim, giving evidence and then providing reasoning. And that came from several meetings with our staff to decide that those are the three terms that we wanted to use. And it was really interesting, one of the students, when they were being taught this method for math, said to our teacher, this is exactly what we do in science. So they're making the connections in the classroom and we're really excited about that. Goal number two is, is for Mendez School to develop a new report card. We have seen that it is time to have a more consistent report card for our entire school. Right now, we have some real differences among our whole school for various reasons, but we, we feel as if it's time to, to make sure that, that we are Mendez motto goes beyond just kids saying it in the dining room for their attention, but also to ensure that students are, are being presented with a consistent report card for parents to see from grade to grade. I know that's something that the Warren School successfully implemented this year and we certainly will use them for some advice, but we plan to take the whole year to do that. We're going to have a committee of individuals that will work hard to look at other report cards and to come up with a, a report card that will truly show our parents and our community members what our students are doing and how they are making progress throughout the course of a school year. And finally, goal number three is really continuation of one of our goals from last year. It was written as a two-year goal. We made great strides towards incorporation of a social emotional learning. I, I don't want to call it a curriculum because that would never be accurate and not an accurate representation of what social emotional learning is. It needs to encompass everything that we do in our building on a regular basis. But we developed a great committee this year and they've provided some wonderful tools and resources for our staff as our first step. We'll present those to our staff during our first two days of professional development. But now we're going to take those steps and we're going to make sure that we are implementing the social emotional learning resources that we found along with the responsive classroom techniques. Many of our teachers are going to be trained this summer due to a collaboration with Dr. Vieri's office as well as the Decisions of Return Coalition. So we're excited about that initiative and that just as a continuation of our goal to make sure that we're fully implementing social emotional learning for the 2019-2020 school year. So we're going to take another year to really make sure that we're sharing this up and have things going the right way. But we're moving in a positive direction as we go forward. As you can see, based on what we provided to you, each of these goals directly relates to one of our improvement priorities. We were able to hit all four of the improvement priorities with these three goals.
Thanks, Mike. Do you want to just, I don't know if you want to take a minute to, I know that you work with the site council on developing the goals and you've given us that information in the packet, but just for anybody who's watching, just acknowledge who the folks are on the site council.
Absolutely. So our, our site council was made up of some really fantastic individuals. We had Ms. Erin Bannon was a representative from our teaching staff. Ms. Bannon is a, a teacher in our multi-age neighborhood program. Stephanie Baluconis is a grade four single grade teacher. She also served in the site council as a representative of our faculty. Our parent representatives included Tina Fatanides, Leah Lester and Amy Letachewski. And we were greeted occasionally by Mr. Kendall, who served as sort of the school committee liaison to our group this year.
He did present a note when he didn't show up, right?
Yes, yes. Or, or a nice phone call to make sure, so we always know.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Kyra?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you said that you wanted to have more consistent report card from grade to grade. Did that also include from neighborhood to traditional?
And that's really what I mean. I, I want to make sure that all of our programs, whether it be single graded or multi-grade, that's a great question. Our single graded and multi-graded are looking similar. We want to make sure that, that each student goes home sharing the same information because we are teaching the same curriculum within our building. So that, that is exactly the, the goal.
Good question.
Good first question.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Kyra.
Awesome. Off to Mendez dads. Our, our big event is tomorrow night, so if you can join us for one of the Mendez, our game show. We're going to be making sure the kids have a great time for fifth graders. Thank you tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, next item on the agenda is the bilingual parent advisory council proposal and I'm guessing, Ms. Silva is coming up to talk about that.
One more thing for Kathy to think about.
Hi there, thank you so much for making the time to have me come and very quickly speak about the bilingual parent advisory council. Actually, it might be one more thing for me to think about, but it's one of the things that I love thinking about because one of the, the passions that I have is making sure families feel involved in their children's education. And what we know is that we have an ever-increasing number of English language learners in our district. We are well over 100 and we're going to continue to rapidly grow. And because of that, we have to pay attention to some regulation that has changed and come into practice as of this year. And one of those regulatory guidance is to establish a parent advisory council for our English language learners and their families. It allows them to get a voice in their child's education. And what we do know is that sometimes they feel very much disempowered. They too are learning English language. Many times they struggle to both understand the culture and customs of American education. And so this is an opportunity certainly to reach out and to have them become a partner with us in a more full way so that we can help grow and improve our practice here in Ashland. So I wanted to alert you all to that because certainly my hope is that as we go about establishing the parent advisory council for the English language learners, that they will become an active voice in giving us some good input to how we can make more welcome and more successful our interventions with their students so that they can go on to do great things that we all know that they're capable of. That's kind of why I'm standing here.
Thanks, Kathy. Go ahead, Kathy.
Do you see this, so this would be in effect next school year?
Yes. What I would like to do, once I've, you know, spoken with you and alerted you to that, is send out a letter to all of our families who are bilingual, letting them know about this opportunity and seeking to see if any of them want to be volunteers. And then, of course, the logistics will have to happen in terms of making sure translation is available or interpreters are available so that we can know what we're each saying and making sure we have a good communication and dialogue.
Any other questions? We need a motion to create a bilingual parent advisory council in accordance with the new regulations.
Second.
Any other dialogue? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nope, seeing none. Motion passes for nothing.
You guys are awesome. Thank you so much.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting if you like.
All right, you know, I was thinking if I went before Mr. Kyra, I would stay with, for Mr. Kyra.
He didn't stay for you. He did not stay for you. Have a good night, thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Before just moving on to the next item, one thing I realized in doing, when I read through the agenda, I did not identify that we have an executive session. That is posted, it's, that's all required, it's on the agenda. But just for the benefit of committee members and everybody who's still watching, I just wanted to flag that, that was my omission. I know.
And not to reconvene.
Yeah, well, it's on the agenda, it's fine. Our habit of going through this is, is just a habit, it's practice, but it's not required.
You, you only have to declare whether, at the point you enter into whether you're going to come back.
So moving right along, items.
But I have one thought on that, that bilingual parent advisory council, we might want to think about.
Over the summer, adding a liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Number six, AHS Student Activities Account Model United Nations Treasury.
Yeah, so the, Alyssa Egan, who's an English teacher at the high school, is looking to be the advisor for a newly created Model United Nations Club. And we need to have the approval for the creation of Student Activities Account for this Model United Nations account.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Adams on this item?
I have a question. Do you know what other towns have these?
Model United Nations?
Yeah.
Oh, goodness.
I mean, around here.
Pretty much all of them around us, yeah. It's, it's just about interest base and we used to actually have a Model United Nations years ago and no one was interested, so we closed out accounts according to our auditors. And so now we're just, there's interest again. I think with all that's going on in the world, it's great, it's fantastic. And this is just the opportunity to, to do that.
I guess, I saw on here that they want to fundraise for the cost of a Model U N competition. So I guess that's why I was thinking.
So right, so there's local competitions and there's national, there's New York City.
Yeah, that's cool, that's good.
Yeah, it's sort of like, if you think about the JSA debate team, it's on, on par with that if you will, yeah.
Great.
Paul, do you have something too?
Well, so was there a, we typically do these beginning of the school year, right? So it, it, what's the reason for it coming now if it already doesn't exist? Just, just out of curiosity, I'm not against doing it, obviously.
Well, I, I think partly because when we head into the summer, you got Ashland Day coming up and we potentially may not have a meeting and get all of the activities before us because we usually do that in September, or end of September to have all the activities. This was actually planned to try to get to us before our last meeting, but they didn't have the paperwork in, which then they would have been having a concessions and trying to do some fundraising beforehand, that's all.
Okay, so, so that didn't happen, obviously, right?
Correct, that's right.
Did, do we, if there's, there was at one point a, a club or organization, that still exists, we don't have to create that?
I, I would still recommend we do create it and, and at the same time, create the activity account.
Okay, so the, the agenda we've got posted.
For both.
Do we do it separately?
So let's see, Student Account, Activities Account, Model United Nations. We've got the time pieces, but I don't see the creation of the club itself.
It's in the motion.
It's in the motion.
Move to create.
But it's not on the agenda. So why don't we do this, we can certainly create the account.
Right, yeah, okay.
And, right, because, yeah, if we, if we had gone to the point of creating the club, we should have probably done it, so it's just, we'll just create the club at our next meeting, it'll be two seconds.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to create the Student Activities Account for the Model United Nations organization? Which we will have to create.
We're creating an account, we're creating an account for, for a club that we're not approving right now.
That we haven't approved yet. Would you prefer to delay this until the next meeting and we have one meeting left?
I, I think, I think this is sufficient for us to address both.
Okay, I, I'll listen for a motion from the floor or from the table.
I, I would move that we, you know, approve the creation of the club and the Activity Account as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
In one motion?
Okay, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second, any further debate? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion passes for nothing. Number seven, Middle School Student Activities Subaccount Timepiece Newspaper.
As you know, the, we had the group from the middle school come and present the timepiece. Their, their second volume has just been released. And actually, I read it this afternoon, it's excellent work again. And this is just another account to be set up for them. So if they need to fundraise a little bit to offset cost of supplies to print the, the, the Timepiece Magazine.
Unless there's any discussion, do we have a motion?
Who, I have a question, but I don't know if you can answer it. So if they, are they selling the newspapers and who's, who are they selling them to?
They may to students, they, it.
Like a nominal, like.
Yeah, like 50 cents a dollar, whatever it is, to help offset the cost of printing. It's typically what they're trying to do.
Okay.
So I, I move to approve the creation of an Ashland Middle School Student Activities Account for the Timepiece Newspaper.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Motion passes for nothing. Approval for District-wide Co-Curricular Advisor Position, Instructional Grant Coordinator and Approval of Stipend for Instructional Grant Coordinator.
So this is a position that's actually, will be accepting a donation hopefully from the AEFI. And one of their goals is to get obviously more of our staff to participate in the grant writing process for not only the AEFI grants, but for other grants that may be available. It's not just technology related, but obviously it's AEFI's charge. And so they're willing to fund it for the year. We've worked out with the AEA, the fee that, for the stipend. And so in this instance, we need to create the position and we do have two motions there and to set the stipend at $30 an hour for a maximum of 50 hours. This, again, this is not coming out of our funding. It's coming out of the AEFI who wants to supply the stipend for this position.
And at some point, we'll have a, presumably a gift or donation from them to support that?
Correct, yes.
Any discussion?
Well, I just have a question.
Sure.
Any questions tonight?
Yeah.
So you say it would be a grant coordinator for up to 50 hours.
Correct.
So if we're in school for like 10 months, that's about five hours a month? So is that enough time?
It's what they have in terms of the financial resources to provide us. So whomever gets the position, it'll be advertised just like we do any other stipend positions. So it will not reduce caseload, it will not reduce, you know, their, their expectations in the classroom. It's outside of that purview, so yes.
And just to clarify, so the, the discussion about the hourly rate and the hour maximum is, is what you've discussed with the AEI?
That's correct, right, yep.
Anything else? So why don't we take the two motions, do we have a motion to create the advisory position?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, vote passes for nothing. Do we have a motion to set the stipend?
Should we, should we read?
Let's read the, please read the motion, what it is.
I move to set the stipend for the position of District-wide Co-Curricular Advisor for Institutional Grant Coordinator at $30 an hour up to a maximum of 50 hours.
Instructional, I think you said institutional.
Institutional.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? None, the motion passes for nothing. Next item, Student Travel Request AAHT, AHS Make-A-Wish Club to Florida, November 2018.
Yeah, so we did have the Make-A-Wish Club come before us at the last meeting to get our blessing, your blessing, to start the process of defining when they would be going on the trip. And so these are, I'm just coming back to you with the actual dates of the trip, so they need approval for that.
And those dates are in our motion of November 9th to the 14th?
That is correct.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Second.
I need a mo, so the motion to approve the travel request for the Make-A-Wish Club to travel to Florida, November 9th to the 14th is presented. Aaron's made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes for nothing. Administrative Items, Action and/or Information, Mr. Adams.
Superintendent's Report, so I, I'll be very quick, right, Mr. Viera?
Don't say that.
No, just a couple, a couple of things. Ben, obviously graduation occurred, class days occurred, attended both events, went off well without a hitch. Ms. St. Kerr, it's become an old hat, four years of doing it now. It's, sometimes people have to walk me out of the gym because I get frustrated when I don't see things done. So I, I avoid the high school during that week. And so that was great. Had our first meeting with the Mendez School Building Committee. Was that last week? It was last week. And so, so the deliverables that the MSBA has requested, the eight items, seven have been delivered, well, excuse me. The, the eighth is the feasibility study agreement, which, so there's seven that really have to be handed into the MSBA at this point in time. Six have been done, I have one left, which will be completed by Tuesday. So we are well ahead of schedule in that sense.
These are all to be, I think, but done by January, right?
October 29th is probably the, the latest, the January 29th is the.
October twenty ninth is probably the latest, the January twenty ninth is the agreement for a feasibility study. October twenty ninth is one of the last dates for enrollment, making sure the enrollment numbers are accurate. So, so we're in, we're in good pace there. You know, the July second was a big day getting our educational profile done. So we're, that's the only piece that we're missing thus far. The committee had asked at the last meeting to have an update, this is what, we'll take a few seconds. With regard to the helping our own Ashland Fund and, and the use of those funds and where we stand today. So I did ask Ms. Shields to provide me just an update of how they've utilized the funding. And so I'll just share with you some of the areas, because as you know, we did accept another five thousand dollar donation from an anonymous family. Original donation was fifty thousand dollars a couple of years ago. So some of the things that we're doing and have used the funding for was back to, back to school supplies and clothing for numerous families within the district. Paid for student participation in trips to Quebec to students in South Africa. Snacks for all schools to keep in the nurse and guidance offices for children who do not have any. Paid for field trips for Pittaway students, car seat for a Pittaway family. Book fair coupons for all Mendez students on free and reduced lunch. Gift cards, clothing, and presents to enhance the lives of twenty-four district families during the holidays. Paid for student participation to Washington DC for Ashland Middle School student. Gift cards for Ashland families who experienced loss resulting from the home fires this year. Prom tickets, six, senior week tickets, three, class t-shirts, four, yearbooks, two, tuxedo rental for high school students. Assistance with car debt that allowed for continued transportation for employment and school attendance of a Mendez family. So a, as you can see, it's a broad spectrum of where the money is going. It's hit all of our buildings, and so it does encompass the entire community. Very proud of the work that, that Ms. Shields does with coordinating the efforts of utilizing the funds, so.
So let me just, these, I think both donations have been anonymous, right? So it's a little hard for us to say thank you, but if they're out there, thank you. Thank you for your contributions to the community, to these individuals, to students who've been able to benefit from it. They're just another great example of the kind of community Ashland is, that's just great. And thank you to Ms. Shields for providing that info.
And they, the family is expecting to donate considerable sums of money over the next couple of years as well. They've made it very clear to me that this is what they want to do and provide back for our students. So we have in the past as well, when we initially set the fund up, I sent a letter home. And we had other donations go specifically into that fund to help students as well. So the fund was created not, the seed money, obviously, the fifty thousand came from this one family. But we've had other families donate specifically to this fund to assist in with students.
So how, how, how do, how did they get dispersed, like do teachers or admin?
Yeah, so both, teachers, admin, we, yeah, so teachers, admin, nurses, guidance counselors. We've had students present, you know, and say, we know there's this account because it's helped us. And we know there's another family in need. How do you, a lot of it's word of mouth. But typically, we know, right? We know what families have been impacted by, say, the fires, or we know what families have been impacted because of loss of jobs. We're having those conversations with kids, and therefore.
And they also see it, like, I, I helped out the one time, there was, you know, they see children out at recess in the wintertime.
With no coat.
That don't have the right stuff, right? And they're either have to be only on the blacktop, they can't do other things, and, and, you know, so the administrators and teachers know the ones that are in need and.
I was thinking maybe the first day of school when the teachers come in, do you remind them that there is that fund?
No, we do it mainly in faculty meetings.
Yeah.
So since you apparently know who some of these people are, you know, I think we can ask you just to express the thanks to the school committee without us knowing.
I will, and I have, I have met with them personally and thanked them personally and written to them as well. And they are a family that, that, believe me, does not want to be known.
We're very thankful.
We are very thankful, and they know, they know that, they do know that, so.
Anything else, Mr. Adams?
No, we'll leave the superintendent's report at that.
Paul?
Do you have a copy of my monthly report?
Yes, I like my monthly report.
I think I do.
Kathy is just full of questions today. Get him in, you have one meeting left for the summer.
Well, I always like meeting a few, so I hope that, I hope the staff does too.
I send it out to the staff, and I'd say I get a few emails back from people saying I read this good part. Every once in a while, I don't think people are reading it, but if I put something in there about, you know, something I did over February vacation, or a book I'm reading. And I walk in the halls, people say, I read that book, or how was that, or how was your, so I know people are reading it.
I liked what you said, you said not all kids look forward to summer vacation. Like, some don't, some get kind of sad.
Yeah.
Or you're going to get into a routine, and then that routine's going to be over, so.
For a lot of kids, school is their safe place and their happy place, and you see it happen a lot before Christmas break, February, April, kids struggle leaving. So it's just a reminder to staff that as excited as many kids are to go home and start their summer vacation. We do have a percentage in a population of kid who aren't as excited, in anxiety and lack of stability. So just to keep that in mind on these last few weeks of school with kids.
Okay, anything else, Paul?
That's it.
Great, Ms. Bates, warrant approvals.
I didn't practice reading this one, so let's.
Sorry, we have lots of questions for you.
Lots of questions.
We have lots of questions for you about this.
Should have read it, okay, ready guys? Between May twenty, see, it says twenty three. Between May twenty third, two thousand eighteen, and June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, I Kathleen Bates authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of seven hundred ten thousand five hundred eleven dollars and forty-four cents. This includes general fund expenses of four hundred thirty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Revolving expenses of two hundred forty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Grant expenses of twenty-seven thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. And meals tax of two hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of two million one hundred ninety-five thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
You are welcome.
Do we have any gifts this evening?
We do. We have a gift from Oak Realty for a hundred dollars. Various donors, and that was for the David Mendez Grade Five Win It at Mendez event. And the various donors of three thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars fifty-nine cents, also to the Grade Five Win It at Mendez event. Weight to, to Ash Pack, two hundred seventeen dollars eighty-three cents. And AHS Student Council donated for the purpose of vacuum cleaner parts at the high school. For, for three hundred ninety dollars and ninety-five cents, for a total of four thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars thirty-seven cents.
Do we have a motion to accept the gift as presented?
So moved.
What's the first?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any objection, any opposition? Hearing none, motion passes for nothing. What did I skip?
Minutes.
I haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, I did.
Well, you went out of order, but that's all right.
I'll just see if you guys are paying attention. Minutes, May twenty three.
We miss, we miss our chair.
So do I. Minutes of May twenty three, two thousand eighteen.
Do you know what I think, I want, I think, Aaron came in late, and I think you left.
I left early.
But I didn't see that.
Is it right in the top?
Oh, where is it, I missed it.
The people that are president.
Oh, there it is, perfect. I'm looking.
You know, Aaron's not going to miss that, I'm just letting you know.
Just for the record, we did crisscross in the hall, I'll just. Anybody have anything else in the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Um, yes, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Hearing none, passes for nothing. Thank you, Aaron, as always. Now, try to see, should we do action items, just see if you guys pay attention? Member updates, Mr. Kendall.
Uh, let's see. I attended the Friends of the Ashland Public Library's annual meeting, they call it a meeting, it's kind of a gala. They have a little, little, little party, I guess.
Yeah.
We had the recognition subcommittee, and also the policy subcommittee met.
Yep.
High school graduation. I did, I hadn't been in the Ashland Innovation Center before, so I did go in and meet with a few chats, and showed me around. We again had our first Mendez School Building Committee meeting on the fifth. So that was, that was good, we probably won't have a meeting until the fall, I would imagine. It's kind of quiet until, until we're ready to start looking at someone to hire. And then I also attended the Mendez Chorus Concert.
Oh, yeah. Um, Paul, you said the, the building committee? You, you're going to hire somebody, who, what do you mean? What would be the next step?
Project manager.
So, so.
A project manager, okay.
Yeah, so we have to, we have to hire the people that are going to do the feasibility study.
Okay, people might want to do, to do the feasibility study.
Right, so it's not doing the feasibility study, it's, it's, it's going and basically signing up for someone to.
Okay, and you'll do that work in the fall?
Yeah, we have to first be officially invited into the feasibility phase.
Got it.
Which will not occur until the fall. They have, they have a date in December and November to get us on, into the list to come in.
Just curious.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're looking to get everything done as early as possible to get that acceptance this year, where we know what the reimbursement rate will be.
Aaron?
I missed a lot recently.
Eric, Kathy?
I just have, we had the policy subcommittee met yesterday, so.
Always forget that.
I guess you can give some, I didn't give any update on what we're doing in the subcommittee, if you want to do that.
It's always a good meeting, we bring, we're bringing the policies, and so we will have, for our last June meeting, we're, our goal is to have some policies to bring to you guys. And then also, we're going to try to meet in July before our summer workshop, and hopefully have some more policies to bring there.
Okay, and I guess for me, it's, it was graduation, and certainly congratulations again to all the graduates, their families, friends, and others. I was, I was, one of the things I really took away from that was first being very impressed with the valedictorian's speech, thought she was phenomenal. And then the other was how many students are going on some field of science or engineering? You know, as people were talking about where they're going and what they're studying, I was just, it struck me. There seemed to be a lot of students going in that direction, which is great to see, certainly seems like there's a need there. But I had nothing else. So at this point, what? I'm sorry, action, thank you.
It is written down.
So the only thing.
So we have, we have five items on there. One was the update from the subcommittee for recognition strategy, which we did tonight. The athletic fee structure, I think we're doing the summer.
I think that's, right, I'm going to change, I asked Ms. Johnson, and it just didn't get changed. We're going to go the summer for the athletic fee structure, ongoing for the building committee updates. RTI presentation and substitute teacher pay analysis are all summer topics.
Okay.
That we can discuss then.
So, next meeting should be very short.
Sorry, there was something I missed, right, the last one?
Well, I want to add data strategy, and I don't know if it's something we talk about at the.
But what does that mean?
Yeah.
So after filling out five different versions of the same form for my kid to go to Warren next year. We have to figure out a way to do this better, it's awful. Like, we filled for registration back in February, we filled out forms that, there were varying versions that time. And then when you brought them in for the screening, you filled out more, and they were the same things.
So can you meet with me on that outside of this?
Yeah.
So we can sit and look at, one of the goals we've had for years, partly when I was the principal at the high school, we finally got to a point where we're using online registration for classes, everything, the grade book, everything. We can do it at the middle, we're doing it at the middle school as well. I would love to have that all opened up for all families, so instead of even sending home paperwork at the beginning of the year to update, they can, parents can just go online and fix cellphone numbers, fix address mistakes, things of that, all nurse form, all those things. It's more complicated than, than one would think, because of merging files that, I've just been doing it for nine years, to know that every school has input data differently. And when it's different, that means it creates more than one track record. And you can only have one record that can be opened up to a family. But with regard to the, looking at the forms that we're using, absolutely, we're moving even more online stuff with even our hiring process. So it's now going to be online versus paperwork. So I'd like to know what it is, and we can sit and, yeah, yeah.
And if not, it's around like the, you know, the parent survey that we're still waiting on.
Absolutely, yep.
And those sort of things of getting good data.
Yeah.
Why don't we, it sounds like it's largely administrative things, why don't you sit down with Jim, and if you guys think afterwards it needs to be broader discussion, we'll put it back.
Yeah, I'd like to. Yeah, we need to, and Paul and I can sit on that, because we're trying to, we're trying to create a more streamlined, yeah, agreed.
Anything else, folks want to make sure we address at our last meeting, regular meeting of the year? So I think at this point, we're ready for executive session, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session under section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This pertains to Mike Morrow and Sarah Davidson. And section twenty-one A three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an opening meeting, open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, which I do by my motion. And that pertains to the custodial contract and not to return to open session, as my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Bates?
Yes.
And I also vote in favor. So that passes, roll call vote for nothing, we are in executive session, Miles, thank you.